Good afternoon and welcome to the briefing session of the Forsyth County Board of Commissioners. It's good to have everybody with us today. We're going to begin today with a report from August Vernon. Mr. Vernon, if you can come forward and tell us the latest news about the fuel shortage. And while you're walking up here, I will point out that there was an article, as you all know, appeared in the Winston-Salem Journal a couple of days ago about Colonial Pipeline. And I thought, well, you know, maybe the folks over there at Greensboro Airport are getting some publicity for the oil situation. Then I read it. And then yesterday in Kernersville, I saw a line of cars about a mile long trying to buy gasoline. And I thought, oh, my God, we're going back to 1972 already. So it's good to have August Vernon here today to give us an update on what we can expect. And by the way, I have a half tank gas left, so.
Well, then you're good to go, sir.
Oh, thanks.
Well, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity to be here this afternoon to talk about the Colonial Pipeline incident. I did put together some very brief slides here to kind of talk through what actually occurred, what we were doing, and maybe some guidance for the public. Basically, to go back in time a little bit, this all started last week. Last Friday, May 7th, the Colonial Pipeline Company did learn that they were a victim of a series of cybersecurity attacks, of a serious attack. And this was determined, that incident, that cyber attack, was what's called a ransomware attack. So immediately after that attack, Colonial proactively took certain major systems offline. So it really wasn't a direct result of the cyber attack. It was them preventing any further damage to happen. So they had to shut down a lot of their major systems and took them offline to contain that threat. What those actions consisted of, of them basically halting all the major pipeline operations, and it impacted some of their information technology systems. So while their main line continued to be offline for the past week, some of the smaller, what they call lateral lines, have stayed open. Fuel was still moving at a smaller rate. But again, the main line went off, which created a lot of the issues and concerns that happened. So yesterday at 5:00 PM, you may see they had announced that they did restart the main line pipeline operations at 5:00 o'clock yesterday. Now, you have to remember, that's not something that they just flip a switch and within 30 minutes, the entire system is back up and running. It will take several days for the entire system to be back up to 100%. So the last news release from Colonial Pipeline did say that they will experience, or some of the markets will experience, or to continue experience intermittent service interruptions during the startup period, which is what we're in now. Following this restart, it's going to take several days for the product delivery supply chain to return back to normal. And I think it's important to note that even last week prior to this attack, there were already some concerns about fuel due to a shortage of fuel truck drivers nationwide. So we had that on top of the cyber attack. So that's obviously concerning for such a major piece of infrastructure. And so this was a map that Colonial Pipeline just released prior to my putting the slides together. One, I think it shows the size, scope, and scale of the pipeline. I am from Houston, Texas, have family in Houston, Texas, and they were being impacted by this. So this shows you how widespread this was. Basically, what you see on the map, and this is publicly available, the green is the systems that are back up and running off the main line. But you still see some blue, and some of that blue is in North Carolina. Those are supposed to be back up at some point today. So that just gives you a snapshot. It does take them some time to restart this system back up. So what did we do locally? This is not our first time going through a fuel disruption. So this Saturday, our office obviously began monitoring the situation because we knew it could have a serious impact on the community. And we did start updating the city and county managers' offices and the city-county public safety agencies and the school system. Obviously, they have a lot of yellow buses out there, and that is important to keep them up and moving. So they were part of this conversation. We have had fuel disruptions in the past due to hurricanes. And if you remember the Deepwater Horizon, oil spill and fire did impact fuel even on the East Coast. So one of the things that we do on any type of incident or event is we provide daily updates to all our partners. And we're in daily communications with the North Carolina State Division of Emergency Management. Where there were some concerns from the media, social media and the public, they'd become concerned, they were elevated this week. And so our advice was to the public to not panic buy or hoard fuel, which obviously that started happening. There was also a lot of inaccurate information on social media that you may have heard about or seen that would make statements like fire trucks can't respond, ambulances aren't available. And we made it very clear that was not accurate. But we're having to do what we call myth busting. The same thing we had to do with COVID, we've had to do with this. And the county todd luck was, you know, helping get some of that information out through some of our other channels. So as the week continued, as this went on over several days, we did have to start having conversations about, one, what would be the first phase of us maybe scaling back governmental use of fuel by prioritizing and limiting unnecessary consumption? And having that conversation, if it really got bad or deteriorated, what would that look like for us? Because again, we want to keep these vehicles on the road, public safety wise, as much as possible. So one of the things that are happening, has happened this week and continues today, is all the agencies and departments are daily tracking and weekly tracking of their fuel usage, the contracts they have in place. Some of our partners do use civilian gas stations. That's how they fill up. So that can have an impact on their operations. What we did is, starting this Tuesday, we started a battle rhythm of daily conference calls with all these partners we talked about. And those will continue today and tomorrow until we see what it looks like going into the weekend. So what caused the major issues? There's plenty of fuel at the Greensboro Tank Farm. There's plenty of fuel in the system even prior to them restarting it. The panic buying and the hoarding is what has led to the shortages that you see at the gas stations across the region and the state. If the same thing happened, even if the fuel system had not been attacked, we would have had shortages because of the amount of people and the amount of fuel that they were buying. You may have seen the lines. You may have seen people filling trash cans, all kinds of very unsafe activities. So as of this morning, based on the information we had, is by this weekend or Monday, the fuel situation should be stabilized. Again, you can't hold me to that, but that's the guidance that we're getting. So obviously, we're still in the midst of this response. We'll continue to monitor what's going on and coordinate efforts with all our partners, for sure, for the next few days. So a couple of guidelines we want to share with the public because the public has a lot of questions. You know, wait till your tank is at one quarter of a tank before you fill up. Filling up more often right now or panic buying or hoarding is what's creating the shortages at stations. Also, there's plenty of apps and websites and resources you can look at that'll show you which stations are red or green, who has fuel. It's recommended that you call ahead if you're making a trip. People are making trips this weekend. Just call ahead, make sure gas stations have fuel. Obviously, there's been reports of price gouging, so those need to be reported to the North Carolina Attorney's General's Office. They have both an online presence and a phone number for the public to report those issues. Probably one of the most concerning things is actually the U.S. Consumer Product Safety Commission has had to put out an advisory for people not to fill up trash bags, plastic bags, plastic toques, garbage cans, and buckets with gasoline.
Do people actually put gasoline in a plastic bag? That's hard to believe.
It is, but they did have to put that advisory out. So that's probably one of the most concerning things here.
Yeah.
And I think that's just, again, people, the panic buying. It's a loose analogy, but I think this is the same thing that happened, the toilet paper issue. There was plenty of toilet paper, but then everyone runs out and purchases toilet paper. So. So that's just a brief overview of where we're at. Obviously, this will continue for a few more days. I know the White House just did a briefing, and the federal government is supporting Colonial Pipeline and the response. So thank you for the opportunity to be here. I always feel like I'm only here when there's bad news. But does anyone have any questions?
Don't go away, Mr. Vernon. Any questions for August Vernon?
One question, Mr. Chairman.
All right, ahead, sir.
Vernon, what is our capacity and reserves when it comes to Forsyth County?
I don't have exact numbers in front of me. We do have reserves. It depends on the type of fuel, what it's used for. It could be anywhere from five days to 14 days. And so we do have, there's not any one spot where the fuel's at. There's different locations and different ways that they're able to obtain it. So we do have a capacity. I don't have the numbers in front of me.
So Commissioner Alamein, we just had filled our two regular tanks and diesel like earlier this week before this became an issue. So we're in very good shape. And as far as emergency response goes, ambulance will run, police and fire will run. That's primarily how they're gassing up. So we really don't have an issue in that regard.
Thank you. Any parting comments for us, Mr. Vernon?
I got one.
Oh, wait a minute. Ted Kaplan does.
Does Colonial have any competition? Are they the only line?
I believe they are the only major line. That's my understanding of it.
Further questions for Mr. Vernon?
I'm big with, were you finished?
Yes.
I just heard this on NPR yesterday. Said that Colonial put out an advertisement for a job 30 days ago for a cyber attack specialist to do plan, responses, all these kind of things. And the NPR guy says off the cheek, he's kind of off the cuff, he said, well, maybe the ransomware people decided to jump in before they got somebody hired.
Well, it usually takes something to happen. You asked me if I have any parting comments. Just a reminder, this week is North Carolina Hurricane Preparedness Week as the governor has requested. And we always want to tell the public to prepare for tropical weather in the hurricane season, which runs from June to November.
It's really comforting to have a man of your stature and the knowledge of what's going on have coming. This is, you usually have to be the bearer of bad news, but this certainly was informative and very helpful to us.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for all you do.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Turn the meeting over now to Dudley Watts, our county manager.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon, board members and staff and guests. We do have two other discussion items. Tricia McManus and school board members are going to be here. And I think Ms. McManus had let me know that she's coming from another event, had a graduation, what have you. And so anyway, she may, she'll be coming in a little bit. What I thought I would do is, the other discussion item is just kind of a quick overview of kind of where we are with our American Rescue Recovery Plan Act. So it was a situation, we've been waiting on guidance from the federal government. We got that on Monday. And so I'm going to ask Lee Plunkett, who kind of serves as our chair of our work group departmentally around these things. And I'm going to ask him to talk a little bit about what we received and the guidance we received and the sort of the logistics of funding. And if I could ask Gordon just to add in a little bit, he's done some early review of that. And then I'll make a few comments about strategy around how we sort of integrate the ARP funding opportunity into the current budget, and then also what we need to do sort of around the broader thought of how to get those funds, how to strategically invest those funds in the community. So hopefully, Lee is on the line. Lee Plunkett, are you on the line?
I'm here.
Okay. I'll turn it over to you. Thank you, Lee. Just speak loudly.
Sure. Good afternoon, Commissioner. So as you know, as Dudley just mentioned, we've been waiting several weeks on guidance from the U.S. Treasury. Those will be the do's and don'ts on how to spend our $74 million that we're expecting to receive as far as, as part of the American Rescue Plan Act. So on Monday, we did receive the guidance. And then they also opened up the ability to request the funding through the online portal. So I was able to submit the request. I had to upload an ID. And then they actually scanned my face through my phone to verify my identity, which was both amazing and creepy at the same time. But we got everything submitted. And the amount that we will officially receive in total is now $74,256,322. So it's about $100,000 more than the original estimates that had been put out. And according to the Treasury Department, we expect to receive half of the funds probably next week, assuming there's no hiccups in our paperwork. As for the heavily anticipated guidance, it was around 150 pages going in depth into the main areas of what the allowable expenditures are, which are responding to the pandemic, responding to the negative economic impacts of the pandemic, providing premium pay to essential workers, replacing lost public sector revenue, and then the infrastructure piece, which is investing in water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure. So as Dudley mentioned, we have a work group meeting to work through what this means for the county. So we're going to be diving into this guidance and any other educational opportunities, resources that we can come across to learn more. So I'm going to pass it off to Gordon now. He can elaborate a little bit more on the guidance that we received Monday.
Thanks, Lee. And I know a couple of you commissioners are former teachers or have served on the Board of Education, so you know what an oxymoron is, a contradictory term like bittersweet. So we've got one here. We have an interim final rule. So what that means is it's not a final rule, but it's getting there. So as Lee stated, this is 151 pages. This, here it is. This is double sided. And as you can see, I've got a lot of notes on it. We're going through this as a committee. And being a federal document, it's very complicated. But basically, it's going to require more legwork on our part than the CRF did last year. So for example, with payroll, with the CRF, we could just include public health or public safety by and large as acceptable uses. Now, it has to be, the job duty of each person has to be primarily related to COVID response. So we're going to have to figure out what that means. Premium pay is another thing. It sounds easy enough. It's eligible workers performing essential work. Well, essential work is defined as being in person or interacting with people directly. So somebody working from home, even though they're doing essential work, would not be counted and not be eligible for premium pay. So those are some things we're going to have to work through and figure out. The uses, there are a number of uses. It goes on for about 10 pages or so of the potential uses we can put the money to. And so some of those are going to be really helpful for us. Some of them we may not be able to use. There is a whole section about different uses we can put, we can use in qualified census tracts. Those are basically low-income areas, but they're specifically defined by HUD. So we're going to have to work through that, too. And then there's also, an allowable use is to replace lost revenue. The good news is, we're entitled to assume that we would have had 4.1% annual growth otherwise. And so we compare that to what our actual revenues were, and the difference is an acceptable use for this money. So there are exponents involved. So we're going to have to work out, get out our calculators and figure that out. But I know Kyle Wolf's already working on that. So there are any number of issues that we're going to have to work through, but we do have a good committee set up, and Lee's helping us do that, and the manager. And I'm happy to take any questions. I don't know that I really have any answers right now, but otherwise, I'll pass it off to the manager.
Thank you, Gordon. And I'll just make a few comments, and then we can answer any questions. So from a strategic perspective, what we are doing specifically related to the last thing that Gordon said around the revenue loss, is the revenue loss is really what factors into the current year, into the budget that I'm going to submit to you in two weeks. And so we are spending a ton of energy to determine what that is and what that impact would be in the current, in the budget for FY '22. And so we're going to do that. We are not going to spend a lot of energy around, you know, other parts of programming that we would do because we really need to focus on this current year budget piece. So what my recommendation is, is that we figure out the revenue loss and figure out how that impacts with the current budget. Go ahead and dive into the FY '22 budget. I'll be presenting that to you as a manager's recommendation in two weeks. We'll go through that normal process of public hearing and deliberation and adoption. That would set us up to potentially adopt on June 10th. And then we would, that would take care of the current year piece. All that time, and then I think for several weeks after that, there are a lot of seminars out there. There's lots of information being submitted. I know NACO's got information about it, the NCAACC does. And I would propose that we would come back maybe at a special planning meeting in July and spend a day sort of reviewing the compilation of information that we have about the guidance that has been issued. And my suspicion will be updated between now and then and sort of take stock in really a strategic budgeting session to just learn about it, talk about it. You know, that session could create a call for proposals in the community. It could create you directing staff to look at different things and really do that. You know, with the goal of, you know, around mid-August, really having adoption of a ARP or ARP budget that's really informed about all that. It's a little bit slower wait-and-see approach. I know some communities have kind of already said, you know, we're going to spend our money on this water line or this sewer line or whatever. But I, after hearing from Gordon and even reading the document myself, I do think we need to, I do think that we need to understand what the implications are for our current year budget. I think that's key because we got. I think that's key, because we got a budget we need to adopt. And then, and then we need to take some time and plan around that and understand what other people are doing with their money, including the schools, including the community college, including the other towns. That's, that would be my proposal. And, you know, if that seems acceptable, we could talk about it through some briefing sessions. But if that's not acceptable, I need to, really need to know that.
Can we get the job done in one day?
In a meeting in July or so, you know, I don't know. I think we'll, there's so much we don't know. I don't think we can get a spending plan together in July. I think we can, we can start developing a strategy.
Will we have any experts, say, in the arts or whatever, in business, you know, like the restaurants going through the pandemic, that type of thing? Will they be coming in as well? Is that part of what you're thinking?
You know, I don't know that that would be the meeting where we would necessarily deal with specific proposals. I think that would be the meeting where we would talk about what's eligible and, and what, you know, those sorts of things. I do need to mention that, you know, because lots of folks are energized and, and have ideas for how you ought to spend this money, you know, we do have lots of proposals coming in. I have told them to go ahead and submit them, and some of them will be in the alternate service levels in our budget. And they'll be really identified as potential funding for ARP. And so, you know, I have not told anybody to wait and send me a proposal. If somebody just wants to send something, I've said, send it, and we'll, we'll deal with it. You know, but at that point, we really didn't have any guidance until Monday. And now it's even, the guidance is more complicated, I think, Gordon, than we had anticipated. It's much more complicated and involved than the CRF guidance was.
This is a, I don't think we've ever done this before, have we?
I don't.
No.
This is very unusual times, I would suggest.
Commissioners, questions for the county manager on this proposal?
One question.
Commissioner, come right ahead.
I'd just like to say that Dudley, I certainly support your recommendation to see how other folks are going to spend their money. I think my, one of my biggest fears is duplication of funding. So I think for us to wait and see is a great idea. Thank you.
Commissioner Elamene.
Thank you. Gordon, did you get any more information on the qualified census tracts allocations?
Yes. Those are, those are actually defined by HUD. And so if you Google qualified central census tract, it'll pop up. And it, and it lists the specific tracts that are included. If you, there's a part where you can type in the city. You can type in Winston-Salem or Forsyth County or something like that, and it'll show you all the qualified tracts in that city. So I just looked, and I didn't look at them all, because you have to click on each one to see a map. But one of them is, is just a couple of blocks away from here, but we're not actually in one right now. But if you go, if you go four blocks to the north, you'll be in one. So it's quite a bit of, quite a bit of East Winston and some other areas are included.
Commissioner McDaniel.
Oh, I'm just shaking my head.
Commissioner.
I would say this to you. I already spoke to our county manager about some of my, I have a wish list, I have a dream. But Gordon, if I could just spend a little time with you discussing what that, that portion of the ARP is, we can do that sometime later.
And I'll be happy to do that. I believe the manager may have mentioned this, but I just wanted to say this again. Because this is an interim final rule, they're looking for comments. And so it's perfectly appropriate for us to submit comments. And they, and they'll get comments from, you know, thousands and thousands of comments from across the country. They will consider those comments when they make changes to finalize, to have a final rule. And so for any of you, and certainly staff will be doing this, but if any of you come up with any questions or comments that you would like us to submit, or just want to talk about it, please feel free to reach out to the manager, to me, or other staff.
Vice Chairman Martin.
Just on that point, Gordon, do we have to, in order, do we have to wait for the final rules before we spend any of the money?
Well, I don't suppose you have to wait, but that might be wise. I mean, it would be wise. I don't think, it probably won't change too much, but they may, they may make it a little bit easier on us. I guess it could make it harder, too. But I would probably recommend that we wait till we do have a final rule.
And the other thing I've thought about, I've had a couple of conversations with people, community folks. And it, I think, you know, the city's got a substantial fifty-plus million also. And, and it seems like this is an opportunity, and the state's going to get a whole bunch of this money also. I mean, they're going to get, I don't know, three to five billion with some probably similar guidance. And it, there may be a way that if we worked with, and I think some, I think there's probably a myriad of things that can be done with a hundred and thirty million if you added the city and ours together, that would be, we're kind of, I think we've got to look for is an investment in the community. And, and if it gets just piecemealed in about a zillion different directions, that could be, we may not get quite the bang we could get, and we might be able to get some of the state money to match it. Say, we're, we have this grandiose dream, as Commissioner McDaniel mentioned, that we may be able to say, look, why don't the state, why don't you help Annie up and put a little extra money to match us, or give us a fifty percent match or do something. But I think it'd be great if, if maybe, if everybody would be comfortable with Dudley talking to Legarity or the city and have it, because the, with the timeline, with the going slow, being deliberate, and, and trying, because we have the same rules. And to make sure that we're kind of making something that we all agree makes a, I don't think it has to be for all of it, but for clearly a big piece of it, some of the big investments, we ought to be, we ought to be on the same page with, with, with the city, too. And I know the city's already had a, you know, already had like a commented period, and I think some people came in and then spoke. And, and I think they gave everything under the sun that was requested. But I, I, I think we ought, I think we, this is the case where we ought to be, we ought to all be trying to work together, community-wise, to make, make some mileage out of this and do it.
Manager Dudley Watts.
Any other comments or questions?
Just thirty seconds, Dudley. I just want to support what Commissioner Martin was saying. To make systemic changes going forward with this one bucket of money that we won't get again, I think the city and the county should combine their efforts and make the kind of adjustment to have a long-term effect on the community and not just short-term proposals. And I've talked to a few community people, too, and they're excited about that concept.
I will certainly reach out, Lee. On the, we do the monthly roundtable, managers' roundtable, and we, that is the primary topic of those meetings now. And so, you know, for some of the jurisdictions, it's a little simpler. I know, you know, Walkertown and Lewisville both were pretty quick to say theirs would probably be used for water and sewer projects. And so, you know, but, but in other places, it's going to be a bit more complicated. So I will, I will certainly reach out to all of them, but I'll pay special attention with Lee. Anything else before I introduce our school folks or Mr. Chairman? If Ms. McManus did show up, and she's got some board members with her, and I can turn it back over to you.
You know, that's a high compliment to ask me to introduce the school superintendent, because I can speak, and it makes me happy.
All right.
Tricia McManus, please come forward. Have you met any of us personally, Tricia? I should say Ms., Mrs. McManus. I don't mean to call you by your first name, because.
I've been here one other time in person.
That's true. And you brought somebody with you as well. Good.
Ms. Gillis is here with me. We're going to take a second to load our PowerPoint, if that's okay?
Sure. While that's going on, would you like to meet the commissioners?
Sure, I, yes.
Well, this is Richard Linville. He's a farmer, and he's been on this board since God created the heavens and the earth. He's the only one that has known, he knows more about commissioners than anybody I've ever met, and he's actually a nice fellow. Commissioner Linville, this is Tricia McManus, our new school superintendent. And, well, since, to get on up the line, Tanya McDaniel, who is a very fine lady. She just got back from Honolulu. You might be interested in talking to her about her trip. We'd all like to know what she did out there. And so now you know Tanya. And Don, do you, I guess you know the vice chairman, Don Martin.
We have virtually met a time with him.
Yes.
He's a doctor.
Yes.
You're not, I keep thinking you're a doctor of mathematics, but you're also involved in physics. Is that correct?
I was a science, I was a physics major in college. If that's irrelevant to the universe.
Oh, well, I just wanted, you know, say something about how fine a man you are. And he's from Georgia, northern Georgia, and a very fine fellow. Ted Kaplan, who at one time was the majority leader of the North Carolina Senate and is almost single-handedly responsible for the film school at the North Carolina School of the Arts. And he's been an elected official since I can, I can't remember. He was in politics. He's a very fine person. He's smart as a whip and lives in Lewisville. Would you like to say something? And then here's another fellow over here. This is Fleming Elamene.
Yes.
He, to his credit, he's a former Wall Street banker.
Former educator.
And that's, he's really smart. And the other part of this is, he taught school at Glenn High School. Is that correct? All right. And finally, last but certainly not least, is a former member of the Winston-Salem Forsyth County School Board, Gloria Whizen Hunt. And she is, she's been on this board since nineteen ninety-four.
Six.
Six. You get some idea of Gloria's personality from that remark alone. Is there anything you'd like to say to our new school superintendent?
No, I said it the last time you were here, but I repeat, we're happy to have you.
Nice to see you again, everyone.
Well, have you got everything put together now?
Yeah. Everything put together, like, everything?
Well, whatever you want to do there. Right now, you're the boss. You have total control.
Yes. Well, good afternoon, everyone. Today is indeed a great day, because I was able, and some of our board members also, were able to attend in-person graduations, two this morning, early college, well, one this morning and then one this afternoon, early college and middle college, which is why I came in a little bit late. But a great day to see our graduates walk across the stage. That's why we're sitting here, to help them get to that next part of their life. And so, thank you. I'm excited to be here as well, to be able to present our budget proposal to you. I am going to tag team it with my wonderful colleague here, our CFO, Andrea Gillis. And so we're going to tag team it. Basically, we're going to share our budget proposal and some budget updates. And then I'm going to actually jump in and give some specifics around our S R dollars and where we are right now in the process of gathering community feedback and input. So we'll spend a little bit of time, I'm going to go ahead, so we can jump right in. And I'm going to bring up Andrea to begin.
Welcome, Andrea.
Thank you. Good afternoon, commissioners. So we're going to review our total proposed budget. For twenty-one twenty-two, our total proposed budget is comprised of four major categories for our operating budget. We have our state current expense budget of three-hundred-and-seventy-million, federal grants of two-hundred-and-fifty-seven-million, and you'll see a little asterisk there, and that is, represents the two-hundred-million dollars that is included in our budget for S R. We, I did include the two-hundred-million that were anticipated to get from the state in this budget. Also, we have a budget request of the local current expense fund of a hundred and forty-nine-point-four-million. One-point-six-million of that is our fines and forfeitures, and the rest of it is county funds. And we have fifteen-point-one-million in other restricted and special revenue for a grand total of seven-hundred-ninety-two-million dollars. In addition, we have capital outlay of four-point-four-million and a child nutrition budget of twenty-seven-point-three-million for a grand total of eight-hundred-and-twenty-three-point-seven-million dollars. This is not including our bond funds. So it seems like one of the slides was missing. Yeah, well, you have it in front of you. For some reason, it's not appearing on the screen right now. But we have our total proposed budget uses of funds.
You put it right here?
Yeah. Thank you. There you go. Thank you. So we have the total proposed uses of funds based out into the categories, and I have the total budget as well as the county funds. So as you can see, eighty-seven percent of our budget is salaries and benefits, our total budget. We have another seven percent that's purchase services, four percent supplies and materials, and roughly two percent is our charter school pass-through. And then I broke it out again as far as the county funds are concerned. Seventy-four percent of that budget is salaries and benefits, thirteen percent is purchase services, six percent is supplies and materials, and seven percent is charter school pass-through. So for twenty-one twenty-two, we have some projected mandated increases that we have in our budget. The retirement rate for twenty-one twenty-two is estimated to increase to twenty-three-point-two-percent for twenty-one twenty-two. That's a seven-point-one-percent increase over the current rate of twenty-one-point-six-eight. This estimate is based on a three-year average increase. The cost for locally funded staff is approximately eight-hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand dollars. The estimated state health insurance premium is anticipated to be six-thousand-four-hundred-and-seventy-eight dollars. That is a two-point-four-percent increase over the current premium of six-thousand-three-hundred-and-twenty-six dollars. This is also based on a three-year estimate, I mean, three-year average increase, and is the estimate for locally funded employees is a hundred-and-thirty-six-thousand-eight-hundred-dollars. The budget also includes a three-percent increase that would include the step increase for certified staff, which is teacher support staff and assistant principals. The estimated cost for locally funded staff is six-hundred-and-sixty-two-thousand-three-hundred-and-fifty-one dollars. There are other salary increases also included in our budget. There's a three-percent salary increase for classified staff. The local cost is nine-hundred-and-six-thousand dollars. This is dependent on state legislation. The projected sales tax revenue from the Article forty-six sales tax increase for twenty-one twenty-two is seventeen-point-six-million. This is six-point-five-million above the eleven-point-one we received in twenty-twenty-one. One-point-one-million of that is, of the projected revenue will have to be allocated to charter schools. This leaves about five-point-four-million that will fund a local teacher supplement increase for twenty-one twenty-two. Also, the district has been evaluating the compensation of non-teacher classified and non-certified staff. During twenty-one twenty-two, the district increased salaries for bus drivers, custodians, teacher assistants, therapists, and child nutrition staff. Funding of two million is requested to adjust other employee groups to keep Winston-Salem Forsyth County schools competitive in the job market. We also have other increases that we have to budget for for next year to sustain our operations. We're opening Lewisville Middle School in the fall, and we'll also open our Virtual Academy as a standalone school for twenty-one twenty-two. Virtual Academy opened this fiscal year as a virtual school. However, those students were duly enrolled in their home school as well as in Virtual Academy. And the Virtual Academy positions were funded with our S R funds. This year, we're funding, we have to fund some additional positions that will go with the school, like the local principal salary, additional counselor. But for Lewisville, we have to fund additional positions such as custodians and a counselor and a A P. The additional cost, and also utilities as well. The cost is estimated to be six-hundred-and-seventy-seven-thousand dollars for that opening of those two schools. In addition, there's three-hundred-and-eighteen-thousand dollars requested to, for the retired, me, I'm sorry, for the utility increases. Electricity is expected to go up three percent, and natural gas, eleven-point-seven-five-percent. And also, due to the projected increase in county funding, it is necessary to allocate the proportionate share to charter schools that serve Forsyth County students. The estimated charter school increase is one-point-one-million for twenty-one twenty-two. Now, I wanted to talk a little bit about the impact of the Article forty-six sales tax revenue. We would like to thank the citizens of Forsyth County and the county commissioners for supporting the sales tax increase to increase our teacher supplements. The chart below details the most recent ranking of teacher supplements per the NCDP statistical profile. So as you can see, we have increased our supplements from, just in the current year alone, went up thirteen-hundred dollars per teacher, the average. We went from being number eighteen in twenty-twenty to number eight in twenty-twenty-one. So we thank you for that.
Can you, can you just tell us what, the last time we had this discussion with our supplement committee person, I mean, not supplement, our formula person, is this among, is this of the hundred-and-fifteen school districts? I'm just questioning what the ranking represents.
Yeah, it's the hundred-and-fifteen school districts.
The hundred-and-fifteen school districts.
Yes. This is from D P I's website, this data. And it's, like I said, it's the, it's the average of all the supplements. And then this is. And then this page here represents the county proposed budget request for 2122. As you can see, we started out with our adopted budget of 100, and this is just the current expense fund. $132.7 million was our adopted budget back in December, November, December. You guys allocated 2.9 million more to us, which gave our base budget a total of $135.6 million. And then we added our salary and benefit increases that I explained earlier for a total of 1.7 million for the 3% step, including the step, the health insurance and retirement rate, the anticipated state mandate increase for non-certified staff of $906,000, the Article 46 sales tax increase of 5.4 million to be allocated to supplement, and then the $2 million for compensation adjustments for staff.
Can I stop you in interruption one more time? This is my issue, I just simply can't see either the slide or the other.
Well, do you have a copy?
Within this book, is there?
Yes, it's in that book and it's on page 21, page 21 in your book.
Got it.
Okay. And then we have our sustaining operations, $677,000 for Lewisville Middle and the Virtual Academy, utilities rate increase of 318,000, charter school increase of 1.1 million for a grand total proposed county operating appropriation requested of 147.8 million, which is 12.2 million over the prior year adapted, I'm sorry, the prior year base budget. And now turn it over to Ms. McManus.
So, I'm going to jump in at this time because I know there's been a lot of conversation around the S R dollars for our district. And so, basically, we, you saw it in the budget proposal that we were going, we put the 215 million in the budget. It's actually over three years, so it's not going to be all that in one year, but we did want to capture it. So, yes, we're going to have 200 million. The plans on using the funds, we are, we have had strategic planning meetings, and right now, we are in the process of getting community feedback. And I'll show you in a minute all of the different options for community to provide, to provide feedback. We have to submit a detailed budget. The, the state has given us guidance on what areas we can spend the dollars on, and we also have to get approval. So, the state has to approve our budget, every line item that we are asking, that we end up asking for. And so, basically, we're gathering state input, as I said, and then we will be presenting as soon as we finish gathering input, which is by June 1st, we will be presenting a final plan to the Board of Education aligned to our strategic plan. So, here are some of the events that we're having. We've already started meeting with different groups, but it's, it's both internal and external stakeholder groups, and we're presenting them, not just a blank slate, but we're presenting them with several ideas that support the guidelines we've been given, and we're asking for feedback from those groups. We've already started the process. So, here are the S R funds. As you know, the, the CARES Act was that first S R 1 bucket. Those monies we've been using since the pandemic started and, and since school closure started over a year ago. S R 2 and 3 are the next big pots that we're going to be given, and I'm going to show you exactly how much we will be getting. So, you can see the U.S. total, N C total, and then what W S F C S is receiving. So, in S R 2, it's 66 million, S R 3, 148 million, and you can see how long we have those, when we have to spend the funds by. Here are the areas we are allowed to address in our funding. Again, all of this funding is supposed to be in direct response to the impact of COVID on our students. That, that's the overall goal of the funds, and then these are the things that we can address in response. So, learning loss, long-term closure, we have to be prepared again in the event, anything were to happen again with any kind of closures, technology, mental health, summer learning. And then you can see, we also can provide principals and leaders with resources and then address unique needs of student populations, of our special populations. You can also see preventing the, any further transmission is also part, a big part of S R 2 and 3. So, all of the preparedness and response efforts, all of the cleaning, all of the, the improvement of air quality, all of that is acceptable with S R 2 and 3. So, here are, we have been very serious about these funds and, and being good stewards of both the funds that we receive, all the funds we receive from the state, from our local government, and also then from these funds, S R. And so, we are using a lot of guidance from the Council of Great City Schools, which has released many resources for districts to use to actually make really good decisions about these funds. And so, you can see here, these are the questions that we are addressing and asking ourselves. I won't read them all to you, but again, the, the first one around addressing current and long-term needs is very important. As you all know, the, the pandemic was not the cause of achievement gaps within our district, but they have been exacerbated as a result, but we already had achievement gaps. And so, as, as I share with you some of the things that we are thinking of, it's to address those gaps, but also they're, they're even greater now since, since COVID started. You can see everything has to be aligned to our strategic plan, and I think it's very important. And number three, people think 200 million, and their eyes get wide, and they think, okay, let's just go out there and do these things. And honestly, we really need to stick to what is proven, what research shows actually works in schools if we do it well. And so, we really want to make sure that we think about the efficacy of any investment we make. Even though innovation is great and we want to be innovative, we need to make sure we're doing things that, that actually will lead to better results. And then also, number four is huge. This is not going to be something that we say, here's 200 million, let's split it among our schools. That's just not the right approach. The right approach will be an equitable distribution of funds as we think about which schools have more students that have been impacted. Those schools will get more resources, and that's what equity, an equitable formula is about. And then you can see sustainability. One thing that districts cannot do is put their, like, transfer money, put a bunch of salaries on this funds, it's going away in three years. And so, we can't do anything that will end up hitting a cliff in three years that we can't sustain. And so, that is huge with what we're thinking about right now. We, we have to be able to sustain what we're doing, and adding a ton of positions that can't be sustained won't, won't work. So, those are the questions, and we're going to be measuring everything we do, and you'll see how we're going to do that in just a second. I'm going to go quickly through these slides. This is what we're sharing with the community to give input on. These are some ideas that have been thought through. And so, the first one, since one of the categories is educational technology, the first one is really about making sure that we are prepared for one-to-one learning, for differentiated instruction through our technology. So, when the pandemic hit, it was a reaction. We got to get stuff in every kid's hands. That is not what one-to-one is about. It is literally about improving instruction for every student, meet their individual needs. And so, we want to get on the front end of this. We want kids to use their, their technology as a resource in the classroom and then take it home with them. And so, basically, some of this are, some of these are the, the technology things that we've thought through. The next one is about sanitizing and cleaning. Additional, we, we spent a lot of additional dollars this year, thanks to the CARES money, on cleaning. Your normal amount of cleaning would not have been sufficient this year, and so, from hand sanitizer to, oh my gosh, wipes to everything, we're going to need to continue that as we go into the second year, into next school year. Just so you know, we do plan on a five-day-a-week in-person learning environment next school year, except for Virtual Academy. And so, we're going to need to keep our campuses extremely sanitized, extremely clean, and make sure we're still keeping our students safe. So, we also want to do the touchless, some of our schools this year were purchased the touchless cooler, fountain, so students could fill their own water bottles, so to prevent students from actually leaning over and, and drinking out of a fountain that they might touch with their mouth. And these are, these are something that we could do with these funds. And also then, any repairs to HVAC systems we need. This year, thank you very much. You all helped us get the bipolar ionization in our classrooms. We appreciate that very much. This would allow us to do any other additional repairs to HVAC systems. If we keep going this year, in, in, as preparedness and response efforts, we started something called COVID coordinators in all of our schools. We gave them a supplement. It was not a large supplement, but a supplement so that they could do all the contact tracing. Anytime a student is a close contact in our school or, or test positive, we have to go through an entire process of contact tracing. And so, basically, COVID coordinators helped with that. We have a, a team of contact tracers. These things we only want to do for one more year, and we're all keeping our fingers crossed that one more year will be enough to be able to do these things to keep our kids safe. Nurses, our nurses right now are, they're, they're spread out, they have five to six schools assigned to them. So, in some cases, they don't even, they might get to a school one day a week, if that. And so, we have, one of the things we're posing out into the community is to be, the ability to add more nurses. And you might be thinking, well, how would you sustain that over time? Because that's one of those things, if we add them now, we're going to want to keep them. But maybe some legislation will pass because there is legislation out there that, that is about adding nurses to schools. So, fingers crossed there. And then continue our school and district CARES teams, which have been really, our CARES teams have gone out into homes and done home visits and knocked on doors and, in order to meet the needs of our families. Here is long-term closures. So, we have to, one of the categories that the state is requiring is that we plan for any additional long-term closures. We want to be on the front end of it. We did a lot this year with software and security, cloud-based security systems. Who cares? We need to be able to continue those things if, if we were to go into closure again. So, we want to be able to continue that. And also, make sure that instructional staff, support staff have devices. When we closed this year, teachers had devices, but when you have TAs and you have counselors and other people that need to be able to virtually connect with students in the event of a closure, they need to have access as well, and they need to have the right equipment. So, we want to be prepared for long-term, any long-term closure. Here's providing mental health. This is also huge, mental health services and supports. This has been a big issue and is going to continue to be. And so, when we bring our students all back next year full-time, we are about 65% right now in person, and the others are remaining at home, which means they've been learning from home for a year and the end of last school year. So, it's been a long time. Some of our, if you think about it, some students, depending on the grade, have not spent a lot of time in, in, like, in going into middle school. If they were a sixth grader last year, they left early and they haven't seen their school at all, and they're going to be in seventh grade, and it just, we, we're going to need a lot of support and coaching for our kids. So, these items, the wellness staff, the mental health coaches, social, social emotional learning coaches, and additional social workers, these staff members, it's not one per school. We, we wouldn't be able to do that, and we never could sustain that. But they are folks to front-load, to work with our classroom teachers, to embed S E L, social emotional learning throughout the day. It can't be something that's isolated, it has to be all day. So, a lot of these people would front-load, build capacity of our staff, and they would know that they would be three-year positions, and then those positions would, would go away. They're not to be sustained forever. And then social workers, we, we, again, social workers are split between many schools. The student services staff is definitely under, underfunded by our state. We, we, we need more student services staff. And then you can see professional development that we're going to need for our teachers and all of our employees to work with our students and make sure we're serving their needs in the best way. And summer school, so this year, we're offering 16 programs in our summer school. We're hopefully, as of right now, we had about 6,000 students registered for the summer program. I'm hoping that goes up even more. But summer, as you all know, summer school's legislation came out, and we have to use S R for that. So, this is one area that we don't have a choice on S R. It's S R will be used for your summer programming. And then you can see other opportunities, tutors, each school can use tutors both during the day, on Saturdays, after school, and we will use an equitable formula to give each school money for these additional tutorials. And then you can see for our Inspire 340 schools and other schools that have been underperforming, we will, or we've, we've underserved pretty much, they will, we're going to look at additional time for students in their buildings, and then continuing work with our community and our community learning centers. And I have one more, last one, addressing learning loss. So, this is a big one, and so you can see the different things that we want to do there. We want to make sure we have all the most updated research base and relevant instructional materials in the hands of our students. We will not get learning loss addressed if we are using materials that do not meet the rigor of our standards and that are not current and up to date. And so, that's going to be really important. You can see data-driven professional development, the science of reading. There is no reason that every student, it's a very small percentage of students that have such serious cognitive delays, serious, serious cognitive delays, that would not be able to learn to read by third grade, and we need to do better. And so, basically, we're going to do a great deal of work around the science of reading, pushing literacy coaches and math coaches into our schools to make sure implementation is high quality and that we get all of our students reading on grade level by third grade. You can see some of the other things we want to do, making sure we evaluate everything we're doing. If something doesn't work, we're not going to keep doing it for three years. As we measure our progress, if it doesn't work, we're going to make changes and mid-course corrections. And then the last thing on the bottom right, and you can see the substitute staffing, our fill rates have been lower this year than ever before. We are rethinking about working with somebody to actually take on the substitute program because it's, it's, our fill rates, again, have decreased. And then the last one is about high school graduation coaches. Again, these are to support at-risk learners who have gotten behind this year. When they come back in the fall, they're going to need to, students are going to need to make up credits, they're going to need to get a lot of extra support. And so, again, these would be three-year positions to get kids back on track for graduation. All right, and then I'm not going to go through all these slides because I'll just, I'll just kind of show this one, but we did have extra specifically broken down by each course and where our students are performing. But again, for time's sake, I'll just basically show you this. If you look at this, it, it paints the picture a little bit of where our kids are since 2019 to 2020, so when they left with the pandemic and as a result of this year. And this is, this is no result of the fact that our teachers have, they've worked very hard, our school staffs have worked extremely hard, and so have our district leaders, but this is a result. You can see more students in the different content area. English was the best, actually, English too, but you can see that the not proficient students, which would be level one and two, has increased. And then if you look at the, the higher levels, five, there's been a decrease. And so, this was just to paint a picture. Before the pandemic, I'm sure you've seen the data that shows the achievement gaps and, and where we are. It's about 51% of third graders reading on grade level right now before the pandemic. So, there is a, there is a, a very, the, the funding being sent by the federal government is critical, so we can address the issues that you can see on, on data slides like this one. So, again, I'm not going to show you the rest, but I'll stop. You have it, you'll have it in the, I think you have a copy of the PowerPoint, and we'll make sure you have all this, but it shows all of our data across the board. And with that, I'm, again, I'm not going to keep going. I'm going to open up to questions and bring Andrea up as well, and we'll open up to questions.
Commissioners, questions for Tricia McManus, our new superintendent? Comments?
I may make a couple just general sort of questions. I think, obviously, you, you came in right when we were discussing our American Rescue Plan Act dollars, which, which have very diff, obviously, very different rules than the schools. And I did look at the rules for the S R 2 when it passed, I actually read those, and pretty much said, you can spend money for anything you can spend federal money for. If you've been spending money in Title I, whatever you spent it for, those kind of things, those would sort of be the things, which gets you into huge opportunities for things that, that, well, it gets into the issue of confusing of add-on, supplement, supplant, all those kind of issues, because you can spend them on current operational things you're already doing. And we don't have, we're not going to have that issue for us, but we are going to keep our money separately. I mean, we're going to keep our own sort of separate accounting of our, our American Rescue Act money. And it would seem to me for you all, it would just seem to me, that appeared to me, that would be a really good thing to do, is to keep that totally separate and to see how it, because if you add extra, and you can't help but hire, to do those things, you're going to hire people. You're going to have to hire some people. And that understanding of how that, in, in three and a half years is gone, is how that could work. And, and I, and there are actually some probably ways you could extend it beyond, even with some realistic uses of kind of how fund balance were handled in some ways during some other times, that that could actually sustain some programs for a period. I think there's a way you could do some of that, but I, I think for you, it is very helpful. I think for us, it would be very helpful. I mean, to see how the money is, is separate from your, just like, we're working on our operational budget, we're not even starting on our American Rescue Plan. And, and, and just on your very first slide, you actually had a list of all the revenue sources, and you had all of the federal revenue sources in your 2122 budget. And I would think it would make a lot of sense to not, once you sort of get your idea to adjust that later, because you, surely, you're going to be spending some of your S R money over years two and three and part of year four, and that you would not consider that a part of your summary of, it's, it's really what you're going to spend in 2021, 22, and not include that, that total. So, I think that's an accounting thing, and it would help us, and I don't see how you could, I don't see how you can operate without doing that, how you could not be informed of, so that you know what is a potential recurring issue for you and staff. I mean, that's going to be a critical issue.
You know, Dr. Martin, the other thing... You know, Dr. Martin, the other thing we talked about was having a, for the ESAR dollars in itself, a oversight task force of a representative group of community members that would meet quarterly with Andrea, see what we're doing as another layer of accountability, but it would be pulled out. Did you want to comment on the?
Yeah. All of our federal funds, even though they're lumped together, this DPI requires that we keep them separate by program report code so we can at any time pull any of our federal programs by their program report code and see what those expenditures are. The reason why I included the total is because DPI is going to give us, allocate those funds to us all at once. They're not going to give them to us over three years. They're going to allocate them to us all upfront for three years and then in the recurring years, they will be, it will be called, it will be carryover fund. So they're going to actually allocate all the dollars to us upfront, which is why I kind of wanted to include it, just for transparency.
Yeah. And you are clearly not, you never have, the school district has never reported to the county commissioners what your carryover is in Title I, for example. That's something that the commissioners have never seen. I think if this, on this money, I think we'd have some real interest in seeing how the carryover part of those, because I see, I see how the state's doing it, which is pretty, I can see that. And just creating a new program code for the ESAR III or II and III, putting that together, probably, I assume ESAR II and III have the same rules?
ESAR II and III have the same rules for the most part, except for the one about allocating resources to principals. That one is only in ESAR II. And there are two separate report codes for the state, so they did break it out into two separate report codes.
Yeah, I think that, we're actually not interested in that little piece, but we're probably interested in the other part because it's so much that you're hiring out of that, that it'd just be great for us to see. I think your oversight committee is a good thing. For me, it's an accounting issue, to sort of see how that, where those, and accounting by kind of what ends up being staff and so forth, what's going to end up being, the ultimate issue is what's recurring and what's not. And fortunately, some of these things should, over a three-year period, I think some of the cleaning issues will change. You're going to make investment in almost infrastructure with water and HVAC and things and stuff, and those will be done. And that's a great opportunity to do that and be able to go on, but some of that will, I think, get in line. So I think that makes a lot, a lot of good sense. The, the, the other part that, that is really, that at the time, this is Article 46. On the Article 46 money, I think on the quarter since sales tax money, I know the intent was to go to teacher, I mean, to go to teacher supplements. I mean, earmarked, a lot of people campaigned on that and made it pretty clear, this is for teacher supplements. And I think it is at least, I hope I'm speaking on behalf of all the commissioners, is that, is that we would want to see an accounting for that. It's not really, it is a part of your budget, but it's, but at a separate accounting on that to make sure that we're, for example, you know what you spent in the year prior to the quarter since sales tax for supplements. Boom, that's a number for teacher supplements only, teacher supplements. Then you have spent, this year, you got 10-point-something million, whatever, that you will have and that that shows that that's going to, if it doesn't track, if you're, because you know, teachers change, supplement amounts change. If it's not exactly, say instead of 10.1 or whatever it was, it came out as 9.7, you'd show that. And then what was left over would basically be money that carries over to the next, and we were kind of watching, you can kind of watch it and sort of keep up with it. And, and then you do have a great opportunity because of the sales tax money to be able to kind of reshape that supplement schedule some more, which would be great on another opportunity on that. And, and this is only, this is me individually speaking, to encourage you not to cross the board in this second round. I think there was a promise made when the, that a minimum salary, that people get a minimum amount of 2,000, that was kind of a promise.
Yes.
And I think that promise was fulfilled. And now I think, because the current structure just appears to me personally, that you need to be more competitive on the front end.
Absolutely.
Just got to be more competitive.
That is our plan. Right now, we're working on a plan with our compensation director to try to get our beginning teacher supplement, one of the highest in the state. That is our goal.
Just as you're looking at the average, you look at that, some of that comparison.
Yes, we want to try to get our early teachers up higher. We also, we're waiting to roll that out because we want to see what the state's going to do with the, with the state's salary schedule, because we don't want to do something and then the state changes their salary schedule and then it impacts the total salary. So we are waiting for the state to do their salary schedule.
Very wise thing to do because, in fact, I had a conversation with Representative Lambeth yesterday and the state's all in a turmoil over, over teacher salaries particularly, which is, you've probably heard some of that stories. But the, there's a, Representative Elmore from Wilkes County is actually, he's proposed a very different sort of salary enhancement, not just percentage issues. I guess a combination, I don't know what it is, but he's actually, in fact, we're going to have some discussion about that next week, about the House's kind of version of where they're coming up with. And particularly if it changes the formats about how they're doing it, that would, I mean, like changing for building performance pay into the piece, building, changing different breaks for, you know, give lumps and year category, I mean, I can see what's coming is making me very different. That's very wise to wait and then so you can really identify that supplement well, makes, makes a lot of sense. And the good thing about the 5 million plus that you've got, you've got from last year is that everybody's going to get something. And so the experienced people are not going to be short-changed while you try to become more competitive on the front end, which is really a great thing. So it's a wonderful opportunity that that occurred. And I just think we have, I think we all have the interest of the separate accounting for the, for the Article 46 sales tax that is going to teacher supplements.
Okay.
I mean, I think that's clear. As far as the, yeah, well, I haven't looked at any of this, you know, notebook, but probably, I mean, I do have always issues about how various areas that you're growing and stuff and I, really, we don't, not really seeing any of that here. And I, I don't really know, I do have one or two comments. Early on, as you went through that list of, you started with mandated increases, I think that's in here, and you went to several categories from the beginning.
The increases, the different increases? The different increases? Is that what you're talking about, Dr. Martin, the different increases?
Yeah. So you started, it was on your slide, 1234, which was 2122 proposed budget highlights. And you've got mandated increases, which were the retirement, the state health plan, the anticipated 3% from the state, which is always just tossing a coin, who knows? In your, in your remaining part, the, clearly the first, the 3% salary increase for classified staff, it makes perfectly good sense. You've addressed Article 46. The third bullet does not have, let me see, it does have one amount in there that is...
2 million.
It is, the district has been evaluating your compensation in non-teacher classified. And I have noticed those as they have appeared in the newspaper. And, and I have, I guess in my own mind, again, speaking individually, I saw issues with the ability to sustain that over time. That's a sustaining cost of that, it's going to be substantial, and I really was wondering where you're going to get the money to pay for. So I'm kind of curious about that paragraph. And I haven't, so it looks like you're proposing, you did all these things and you think you want an additional 2 million in this request that you think will be to pay for those, all those pay increases that you approved last year, not knowing where the money was going to come from to pay for them in the future.
No, we had the money for those pay increases.
You paid them last year, but not for the future.
The 2.9 that you gave us in December to help fund some of those.
I think he needs for the next sustaining.
I'm talking about the 2020, the 2122 budget coming up. It appears to me that what you're saying in the third bullet on that slide is that you're looking at 2 million is requested to adjust, oh, that's other employee groups and to keep the compensation in the job market kind of deal. That may be a good number or not, but I'm kind of curious about, so are you telling me that you have the funds already? I mean, I don't know what is out of, out of whatever, what is your total amount? The one thing I did not see in this, what is your total amount of local funds? What are you asking us for? I read in the paper, you're going to ask us for 12 million. Is that, is that how much it is?
That is the increase from what we received this year, yes, including the Article 46.
And where is all that in this?
It's on page 21.
Hang on. Oh, there it is. I see that 12 million. So I, I, I think you have some awareness of kind of what our formula amount would probably produce in a, and I don't know exactly whether that 12 million includes the 5 million from Article 46.
It does.
So if you take that out, you're down to seven.
Well, actually, it was 6.5 for Article 46, but we have to, we have to carve out 1.1 for the charter schools because we have to give them their proportionate share of all of our revenue from the county.
I understand that. So if you, so that's probably, there it is, six, five, the 5.4 and of course, 6.5.
6.5 was the actual increase.
6.5 with the part that goes to charters. I'm following you there. So you're left with about 5.6 as the remainder, which may be fairly close to, maybe fairly close to what the formula may produce for you this year.
Right. That is what I was trying to get close to.
And it appears that the, correct me if I'm wrong, but at the top of that page, when you were going over it, I put a little circle around the second, the 2.9 million, which was revisions to that, which I believe, just tell me what that number is.
The 2.9 is what?
I'll verify what I'm thinking or not.
So when we, when the budget, when our budget was, when your budget was adopted in the, in the summer of last year, we got 132.7 million in our current expense fund?
This was the December adjustment.
No, this was, this was prior to December adjustment. The 2.9 was the December adjustment.
Yes, that's one in.
So that's why, that's why our base budget grew because I counted the December adjustment into our total, so our total is 135.6 in our current expense fund currently.
I think I got it. So it sounds like you're close to that amount. Yeah, it sounds like you're very close to that amount. Good, I feel much better about that.
Okay.
So, so that's covering, so within that increase, you're covering the, the next installment, if you will, of the salary increases you approved last year for classifieds.
Well, we didn't approve any salary increases other than the ones that are on the list and we used the 2.9 to fund those. So we funded those increases, assuming that we would get, at least we would get the base amount of 135.6.
Right, so that's in the base.
That's in our base, so the money, the increases we funded last year are already included in our base.
Yeah, I got, so the, so the new people, the new groups that you're getting ready to look at, which was the bullet I was reading you, which is the extra 2 million.
Yes.
Is a part of the five, a part of that roughly 5 million.
Yes.
Is not the Article 46.
Right.
That's roughly, so that's in there. Okay.
Yes, if it's funded through the funding formula, we get approved for that amount, that's what we would want to use those funds for.
That's good. I'd say after I look through your notebook better, I'll, I'll maybe have a little better sort of overall picture.
And if you have, if any of the commissioners have any questions, if you guys want to gather them and maybe get them to Mr. Watts and he can send them over to us, I'll be happy to answer any question that you have after this meeting.
That gives me, that's a good start. Big picture though, I think I got your big picture.
Okay.
Additional questions or comments?
Three very quick questions.
Yes, sir.
Very quick. In your last presentation, you mentioned six Freedom Schools that may be used in the summer.
Yes.
Do you know where they'll be located at this point?
I do, and of course, I'm not going to remember off the top of my head, but they are all in Inspired 340 Schools and one in Philo Hill. So it's, it's, I don't, can I email you that? I literally cannot remember. If I had the summer school chart in front of me, I would remember off the top of my head. But yes, I left, I didn't bring it. But I'll email, you want me to email that to you?
Thank you, I appreciate it.
They're all Inspired 340 with the exception of Philo Hill.
Okay.
Yep.
The other question, your increase in charter school allocations, do you anticipate that increase in the future and what's your plan to mitigate that?
Well, by law, we have to give the charter schools their proportionate share of our county revenue and our fines and forfeitures. So whenever we get an increase from the county, we have to carve out that increase for them. So I mean, the only way to mitigate that is to increase our enrollment.
To bring our kids back.
To bring our kids back. So that is, that is one thing we hope that we can do, but that is, you know, it's, it's part of the law, so we have to abide by that. We are very fortunate though, that in Forsyth County, we have a, we have a large share of the students, of the, you know, school-aged children do choose Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools compared to other large urbans, where they have a lot more students attending charter schools and private schools. So we have a, we have a larger market share in Winston-Salem, which is fortunate for us.
And finally, the number of students in the virtual school is about what number at this point?
We, so going, so this year, it's been about 3,000 right now, as we speak, that will end this school year, going into next school year, are, they've already registered. And so we have about 850 in the K-8 and about 150 in the high school. And so it'll, close to 1,000 students will be in Virtual Academy.
Okay. Well, the Freedom Schools, do they have any kind of financial support from the school system or they on their own operate?
They're, are they getting some of the summer? I, I don't know.
Yes, I think we are going to be helping them out this summer, I believe.
I mean, we're getting, so we have 16 programs, they're included as, as one of those programs. So all of the 16 are getting support from our ESAR dollars. So yes, I just don't know the exact amount because I do know that there are other funders that contribute to those schools as well, I mean, to that program.
So on your ESAR money, this is follow-up exactly what Commissioner Elmeen is asking. Your ESAR money, are you, you're not having to do a charter school pro-rata share for them, are you? I didn't hear you say that, did I?
No, not charter schools, no, because they only get a chair, they get, I think they may get their own ESAR money directly from the state.
Separate from your money?
Yes, separate money, yeah, we don't.
So the, the summer programs, Commissioner Elmeen, as I understand it, are going to be paid for out of, out of your ESAR money, basically. That's going to be ESAR money which doesn't go to the charter school, if that's what you ask.
Yeah, but the Freedom Schools are not, they're not charters. They're, they're, it's a program basically that comes into our schools.
It's going to be paid for with ESAR funds.
Yes, yes, yes.
Yeah, I asked that question because last year I did read a few times in circles with some of the charter schools and they were asking civic organizations to provide lunches sometimes. And so a group of us got together and did that, so they were sort of scrapping for money. So I'm hoping that this summer, they won't have that problem.
No, we're providing breakfast and lunch to all the students in all of our programs this summer.
All right.
And transportation.
Good, 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 good. Thank you very much. Thank you for the presentation.
Additional questions or comments?
I do have a, a few comments, Commissioner. Tricia, I wanted to say, this is my 30-year presentation with the school board and that the school board members are here too. I believe that kudos, it just, my heart is really happy today because I have a budget before me with the Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools that I truly understand. And it, like I said previously, if there's anything that I can do to continue to help and support that, I'd appreciate it. And I even more appreciate the school board members being here to support this system and this budget as well, again, today. But I do have one question relative to some cost savings during COVID. I would have expected to see some type of cost savings because the schools were closed during that period and I didn't see that in this.
Well, we didn't include any cost savings in our budget for next year. I mean, there will, there may be some savings this year because we weren't running our buses all year, but you know, the transportation dollars from the state don't carry over. So you know, if we don't spend that money, it reverts back. So a lot of our funds, if we don't spend them from the state, they revert back.
Okay.
So I mean, there will be, there will be some cost savings, but we were trying to make sure everybody stayed, you know, working and employed during the closure. Like we, we hired our bus drivers and cafeteria workers to do other jobs while we were closed. So we were continuing to pay people, even, even though schools were closed for, actually not closed, but remote during that time period.
Okay. And the last thing that I'll make a comment about in terms of our marginalized school systems and that equity, I would, I'm really trusting that you're going to, this plan is what you're saying that you're going to do. I shouldn't go through Cleveland and, you know, see something else different or any, any neighborhood in that respect. And that, those things are not really manifesting, so I trust that you guys will make sure that those things happen.
Absolutely.
So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner McDaniel. And you know, I'm really glad you mentioned our Board of Education because I meant to say that when I started, that I was so excited they were here.[1692.02] that I was so excited they were here. So thank you, board members. We've got one, two, three, four, five in person. I'm not sure if anybody's on teams, but thank you for bringing that up.
Why don't we have them stand up and say hello?
Make sure their names with us.
Yeah.
Yes. You want me to say their names?
Sure. They're, they're, absolutely.
Okay. We have, I'll start with our chair. Chair Woodbury is here.
Good.
Yeah, wait, okay, we got you. We, oh, Board Member Bramer's on the, on the teams. Okay. That's amazing. That's amazing. We have our vice chair, Lyda Calvert-Hayes.
Oh, good.
Yay. We've got up here in the front, we've got Leah Crowley.
I like her. Let's not say I don't like the others. Don't misunderstand.
We've got Marilyn Parker. Wait.
A longtime servant of the people.
Yes. And we've got Alex Bohannon in the back, if he would wave. Yep. And then we have Andrea Bramer, who is on our teams meeting.
Gosh, I wonder if you have enough to, this could be considered a meeting.
You know what? Yes. I'm sure you all probably already noticed it right now. No, this is good. So thank you all very much.
I'm glad they were here. Appreciate that.
Could I ask one question to follow up on?
Absolutely. Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner McDaniel, you did have some utility savings, did you not?
Actually, we did not because we were running our, our utilities 24/7 for a while to, to help with the air quality. So we, we actually did not have any savings in utilities this year, unfortunately. Because some of the, some of the guidance we were getting was to saying that we should run our
AC.
HVAC system 24/7 to help mitigate some of the, you know, COVID issues. So we did, we did not save a lot on utilities this year.
And teachers were in the building.
Yes, teachers were teaching. Yeah, teachers were in the building and principals and staff were in the building. Teachers taught from the buildings. Yep.
You know, it's terrific to have that, this many members of the Winston-Salem Forsyth County School Board and the two top educators in the staff in here and supporting each other because you're asking for just a few hundred million dollars. And I think this is your first time, isn't it?
It is. And I can promise you all it will be put to good use. And this, this one is a task, taskmaster. So trust me.
Oh, boy.
It'll be put to good use.
Any further questions?
Well, I want, I want to follow up a little bit on Commissioner Whitten's question. You, you had some savings last year. I mean, I mean, it was, I mean, there were savings. I, I, I'll give you one example. Substitute teachers were probably a pretty good savings amount. And, and I'm sure that in your, I'm sure some of your maintenance stuff in terms of contract work you're able to do. I mean, I, I imagine you saved some dollars in several areas, you know, during the year.
I mean, we did have a little bit of savings and we did use our board-approved bonus for our classified personnel of 3% earlier in the year, based on some of the savings we had because we knew we weren't going to be, you know, using as much gas because we, even though, you know, we have the transportation costs, we do have local transportation dollars. So we did do a 3% and that cost about a couple million dollars to pay that bonus out through our classified staff.
And, and that's exactly, but so what I'm getting at is though, if you're back at full tilt next year, those savings aren't there and you're, and those classified salaries are there. And that's where I was kind of, I guess it, it's, and I don't know if I'll be able to figure it out from looking at the rest of this, but it's where there were savings, did you just straight line to assume those savings are going to continue? I'm just kind of.
No, no, no. The savings were used for one-time expenses. The savings that we did have for, in the current year.
The salary money you paid was sustaining expenses.
Right. That came out of the 2.9 that you awarded us in December. But the savings we had in like, say gasoline fuel, because we weren't driving buses, we used that for a one-time bonus for our, for our classified staff. So that, that's a one-time bonus that will not happen next year because we won't have those savings next year. But the, the classified increases that we gave, the permanent increases were funded out of 2.9 that we got in December, that we were assuming is going to be recurring in our budget next year.
Okay. Commissioners, we've made progress. We've done an hour and 25 minutes. Thank you ladies very much for what you've done for us today. Let's take a five-minute recess so we can do what you got to do. We'll be back. Let's take a five-minute recess, so we can do what you got to do. We'll be back.